I see the Eagles are gathering.
Good afternoon, Arnie.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hi, Arnie.
Ruthie, Ruth and Ruthie, I suppose you're there somewhere.
He is. How did you do it though? And your Christmas go with the baby?
Wonderful. Thank you for asking.
Much fun.
Just an absolute delight. Oh, well, there's Stephanie and the mayor. Pete, I'm just calling out the role.
Here.
Hi, Pete.
Howdy, dude.
Stephanie, I guess you and Holly will have to unmute yourselves. There you go.
Hi.
Hi. I guess we have everybody here.
Okay.
I know Ed's wife was in an accident, so he won't be joining us tonight. He's taking care of her.
Is she hurt?
Uh, well, she had to go to the hospital, spend months of the day for tests and all that kind of stuff, but I haven't heard any of the details yet.
Eeees, hope not bad.
Yeah.
Everything's all right with her. Shall we call the meeting to order? All right, we've got our work session agenda. I think the second ever on Zoom. It's exciting to get to see all of your faces. Um, all right, so the first item of business, we've got public hearings on the agenda tonight for rezoning Easton Avenue and for the plasma donation center regulations. Any discussion comments on those items?
This will be the second reading, right?
It'll be the second reading for the plasma center and I believe the first reading for Easton Avenue. Is that right, Tim?
That is correct.
Yeah.
And I can give you all a little background on both if you'd like it.
Please.
Okay, plasma centers, this is the second reading. This ordinance is to clarify the location of blood plasma centers and other such businesses of these types. These types of businesses will be located only in the R4 zone west of Highway 27 along Morrison Springs Road. Any questions on that? Okay, the rezoning, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property located at 3348 Easton Avenue from R1 to R2, subject to conditions. Building is a duplex and was built in 1968. The property was rezoned in 2015 due to it was perceived as a single family dwelling and was rezoned to R1. The applicant has requested that the property be rezoned to R2 in order to use the existing structure as it was originally built. The property should also provide a vehicular turnaround, a sufficient size to accommodate passenger vehicles so they can turn around and not back on into Easton Avenue.
So this was originally a duplex and it was zoned R1 by mistake when they went in and did the rezoning.
That is correct.
So we're not doing anything out of the ordinary by rezoning it back to R5?
No, no.
Okay, so now.
Has it had any change of use?
No. No, the, uh, the, the power was off for a certain time period, which is what kicked it back to a non-conforming use. And when we told the applicant that, that he could no longer make it a duplex, that's when he requested to try to rezone it back.
Cause I think me and Arnie has went over that. We have covered this ground before, Ed.
We have.
You what?
I think we were talking, talking about a long period of time though, weren't we?
Uh, well, it was, it was, uh, well, uh, we ain't gonna get into all that, but yeah. We won't go down that road.
Yeah.
I went down and looked at it. I don't see a problem with it. Built as a duplex, it would be very hard to turn it into a single family dwelling and where it's located. I don't see any problem with, with it myself, so I don't know if anyone else went by and looked at it.
Yeah, I drove by and it is on the edge of the city limits almost as you're going towards Hickson. And the, it's so up on the slope and then around that blind curve, you're really, as you're driving by, you're really focused on traffic and, and you know, the, just the road in front of you. So it's, it's really not a very highly visible property either to passersby or to neighbors. So I'm not seeing it as being problematic. All right. Any other discussion on either of the public hearing items before we move on? Okay, so the next item on our agenda is appointments to the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals. Pete, I believe you had a appointment that you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna use Carol Rose's appointment of, of Baker Browder, but I won't put her up for the.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I, and I got Rufus on my court of appeals, I believe.
The zoning appeals?
Yeah, the zoning appeal, yeah.
Who, sorry, say who on the zoning appeals again?
Rufus.
Rufus, that's right. You already appointed him last.
Yeah, yeah, I appointed him on the first thought because I kinda, I kinda got him, uh, I strong-armed him into the position there.
Absolutely.
Of course, it's Pete.
Well, I know I still have my zoning appeals board member appointment to make. I would prefer to continue deferring that until we have the opportunity to get an online application form posted on our website. So we have the potential for people to apply should they want to.
Yeah, I think if I'm not mistaken, you have 90 days to appoint these members to the board after the election. So just keep that in mind. We, we get those filled.
Actually, Tim, I pulled up that section in the code and it doesn't actually specify a timeframe for that one. I think that's for the planning commission appointments. This one just says that basically like they serve three years. And then if there's a vacancy, a member shall be appointed within 30 days to serve the unexpired term. And then if they've served three years, they just continue to serve until they've been reappointed or a new member has been appointed. So I, I didn't see, there's, I, I copied that directly from.
Okay, maybe I was thinking about the planning commission.
Yeah, well, I was, I just looked it up because I too will continue to defer because I don't have anyone particularly in mind. And I would just like to see if there's anybody who's interested and maybe has a skill set that would be helpful, um, to that position. So, um, yeah.
Good to know if we can continue having the existing members serve until we're such time as we're ready to make a, an appointment. Great. All right. Anything else on the appointments before we move to the next item? All right, so next item, number three, beer and liquor ordinances.
Yeah, I put this, I put this little on here.
Oh. Pete, can I interrupt you one second? I'm sorry. I, I actually did have something else under that. It's not one of those, but the WWTA board appointment. I know, Tim, you said you were, you would fill in for that temporarily, but is that something like we, we need to like get on the agenda soon?
Yes, um, there, there has been a person that's interested in that and I have spoke to them and they're wanting to meet with the director of the WWTA to find out a little bit more about it before they commit. So, his name is Paul Thompson. Oh. I don't know if y'all know him or not, but he, he has showed interest into that position.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Back to you, Commissioner Phillips.
All right, um, yeah, the, the beer and liquor ordinances, I think, I'd like to look at this and, and get this on some update. And I don't know how much support we'll get with the rest of the board on this, but, um, you know, um, it's, it's kind of like, you know, the, the Thai food in Tokyo, ever since he moved over there, he, he said, you know, I'd love to be able to serve beer. Of course, he's not open right now during COVID, but you know, there's just no way for that man to sell an alcoholic beverage. And, uh, and with the current things, we can 250 foot ourselves to death over here to.
300?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, 300.
For on-premise is 300.
Yeah, right. Well, you know, and, um, uh, I would like to go over these and, and, uh, and I don't know how we go about this. Of course, I'm a new commissioner. I don't know how we go about changing the ordinances of this stuff. But there's a, uh, I'd like to, and according to Arnie, I think that, um, we were, um, we have distance and time. Is that pretty much where we have?
Control versus the state?
Yeah. Is that correct, Arnie?
Like hours of operation? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, hours of operation. And so the time they're open and what days they're open and, uh, you know, uh, you know, they have three liquor stores that are, that are available in Red Bank. I mean, I, I think that's, I, I'm not really on that, but I think the man wants to, uh, especially with the development of the new property right there, it's gonna be right across the street from church. If we don't address these right here, then we'll not be able to have a liquor by the drink in the, in the area.
I have to agree. And since a lot of restaurants make a considerable part of their profits on alcohol sales versus food. And they are severely limiting our opportunities for nicer sit-down restaurants where you can have a cocktail or a glass of wine with dinner.
And the taxes. There's good tax money on the liquor by the drink too, so.
Yes, tax revenue possibilities as well.
So.
You got 300 feet from door to door.
Yes.
Yeah.
Front door to front door.
Front door to door.
As the bird flies.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's three things you're looking at there. You're looking at distance, you're looking at times, and you're looking at 50% of their gross receipt or food. And when you're talking about restaurants, which most of the time they make that.
Is that, is that, is that a, is that state right there or is that?
That's, that's city code.
City code.
Yeah.
You have control over.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with you, Commissioner Phillips. Um, I actually went through all of, uh, the alcohol ordinances that we have and I pulled out several things. I won't go through them until we figure out how we need to address it. But the distance thing I think is like the biggest issue that we need to work at addressing to help our city progress.
Right. Well, you know, I, I know College Dale has went down to a, a, a zero lot line or zero distance, I believe. And, and, uh, and I don't think they've had any issues with it at all.
Eastridge may have done the same as well.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but you guys gotta figure and, and realize that we're not Eastridge and we're not College Dale. You know, we have a lot of churches and that is, that can be problematic to the liquor license and.
Okay, okay. And, and I would propose this right here, Commissioner, to know that, you know, that, um, and, uh, and, and as much as I respect the churches and all of that, so I still see those people eating out in restaurants that serve liquor. And, and, and then, and then on the other side of that, I just don't see that where, that they should be able to control another man's uh, uh, livelihood by selling what products he can eat and sell, you know?
Agreement with you, but I'm not, I'm not okay is a zero. I mean, cause you, you look at it. 300 feet is not that much and, and we can reduce it some, but I'm not okay with zero because you figure if you put a, a restaurant right at the edge of one of the church's parking lots, you, you've got 300 feet right there, even if they're next door, just because of the parking lot. But I'm, I'm just not, I just don't wanna shove it in their face.
Yeah, but, 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 and I'm thinking more of the meeting place to where that they can have church up there on Sunday and then he can sell, uh, a, a glass of wine or something at the meeting place. And I know most of these places I'm talking about are not even open right now. But I'm hoping, gosh, that one day we'll be able to open up, you know, so, um.
I was totally on board with, with the liquor by the drink. We.
Okay.
When that happened and I'm, I'm totally, totally on board with all that, but I think we need to be very careful about how we proceed with this and really look into it and remember that we're not Eastridge. We're not College Dale and we're not Signal Mountain. We're Red Bank.
Right, right.
And let's, uh, let's look at it and, and do something that suits our city and not follow, uh, everybody else. And I'm, I'm off restrictions with, with liquor and beer sales. I, I want the restrictions to be the right thing. I just don't wanna open Red Bank up to, uh, having a bar on every corner. You know what I mean?
Well, and, and from what I've seen on the beer ordinances and all of that stuff, we can't even have a pool table to serve beer.
Now, see, I went through that and I think that's ridiculous. We do.
Well, and, and that's, that's the things I'm trying to talk about is just, you know, let's, let's, let's go through these here and let's pull out some of the, uh, less than.
For that. Uh, Tim, do we need to have a special meeting to, to review these where we have time to sit down and, and go over them one by one?
No, I mean, if, if I can, can get the consensus of the board, I can start looking into it with the city attorney and we can start coming up with some regulations and different stuff, of course, with you guys' guidance, but you know.
Well, and, and, and to expedite this, Tim, is there any way that we could come in and say, well, here's the things that I would like to see? And then I, I know the sunshine laws and all that stuff and just send them to you.
Each, each, each one of you could email me individually of, of your feelings and what you think about this. Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, all right.
Is there advantage to that over, I guess we could go into more detail than just telling you now our preferences?
Well, it'd be, it'd be a whole lot easier to do that if we were actually in person around the table. So, uh, but if you want to, feel free, but you know.
Okay. Well, I think, um, I'm with Commissioner Phillips that the zero line is the way things are going all around us. It doesn't seem to have caused a problem for the communities that have been hearing it that way. And I would be very surprised if the Red Bank markets could support a bar on every corner. We have an average household income of about $41,000. So, you know, we only have the economy to support a handful of restaurants and, and bars and that kind of thing. So I'd like to see that, that distance reduced to zero personally. Commissioner Dalton, sounds like.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. And also just based on during, um, the campaign cycle, knocking on nearly 2,000 doors, um, with Mayor Berry, uh, talking to people in the community, they're ready for this. And that includes the faith community, um, some members from the faith community that I spoke with, um, who said that they are um, not offended by the idea of updating those kinds of ordinances. Because they, like Commissioner Phillips said, they do, uh, people of faith do enjoy going to restaurants and drinking beer and wine and things like that. So, with the changing demographic here especially too, in Red Bank and the growing population of new people coming in and younger people like this is what we heard that they want and that we just don't have the ability to have right now because of those distance restrictions. So I definitely, um, I'm on board with dropping that to zero.
Okay, well, um, we will look into this. We'll get something together. We'll, we'll bring it up on another agenda for further discussion on, on other items along with it.
You got it.
If I?
When we come up with this, will we have a public hearing on it?
Tim?
Public hearing on, on a code change?
It would not be required. If the commission deems it appropriate, then the commission can hold a public hearing.
Okay, and if I have some other issues with like some of the language and restrictions in the other, like sections of the ordinance, should I just email those to you?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, any, any of you that have any other thoughts about this besides the distance requirement, please email me so I can have those when me and the city attorneys are producing the document.
Okay, thank you.
I'm also with Commissioner Phillips on, uh, striking and Commissioner Jano on striking the billiards and restriction.
Okay.
That was ridiculous.
Yeah, I've, I've had so many Footloose references when telling people about that. Yeah, I've had so many Footloose references when telling people about that.
Now, I also see some things in there, too, that were that, you know, that we we're not going to have Bambi and Tiffany dancing at the at the bar also. So I'm 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 okay keeping that in there, you know, so, you know. Not that I've got anything against Bambi and Tiffany, just just that.
Yeah, the other thing with with that, Tim, I would say that I I definitely would like to see the screening requirements for the outdoor patios be updated.
Yeah, I would, too. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a.
And 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 I hate to say this again, and when I don't want to spend all day on this thing, but what about special venues, too? So if we had something in the park, you know, because the way I I believe I read it is is it's it's a thousand dollars every every time that you want to have a special venue out there, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I mean, that that amount was was set by a previous commission. You do have the right to reduce that and change that if if the majority of the board wants to do so.
Well, you know, because I I was just kind of thinking, if we had something like, and again, I'm talking post-COVID again, but the the Friday night concert series like Nightfall has, do they do they have to get a permit every time, every Friday? Or is that something that they could sign up for for, like, an eighteen Friday kind of thing?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure how Chattanooga works that out with them.
All right, well, I I just I just don't know. I just, I don't, I'm not sure, but I'd I'd like to see to where that we could have some pickings in the park or something like that that we could.
Does that fee cover security provided by the city or anything like that, for extra police officers or anything? No, garbage collection?
Well, we we can, we can provide garbage cans for special events, and we have done that in the past, but they they will be required to get their own security.
Okay. A thousand dollars is a a permit fee only. It doesn't include any city services for that fee.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on beer and liquor ordinances before we move on? Okay, so next we have chicken regulations. So I've I'm the one that asked him to put this one on. I would, right now, our current ordinances allowed livestock, including chickens, on only on lots over two acres. But right now, a lot of people are interested in keeping backyard chickens, you know, just a handful of them for eggs. And most lots in Red Bank, as you all know, are much less than two acres. So I wanted to be able to find a way to open that up to as many Red Bank residents as possible. So I've asked him to draft some sample ordinance using some existing ordinances from nearby cities like Signal Mountain. Tim, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I mean, I I came up with a draft, and as as we do all ordinances, I've submitted it to the city attorney, and we haven't had the opportunity to sit down yet, but we will.
Okay.
We just wanted to bring it up on the agenda and get the consensus of the board that we all want to move in that direction.
Sure. So, yeah, what are y'all's thoughts?
Yeah, I'm totally on board with this for personal reasons, and also for neighborly reasons. I did have a few people, when, you know, out talking to citizens, who who told me that they wanted chickens in their backyard or side yard, and because of that, the acreage restriction, they aren't able to do that. And I think that, you know, like Mayor Berry said, because of the lot sizes, it's just really exclusive to a lot of our citizens. And I would like to see that updated. I don't know what the appropriate acreage or or lot size would be. I mean, obviously, I think there should be some kind of fencing around the property, but I do believe that people should be able to have chickens. No roosters, but chickens I'm I'm okay with.
Yeah, we have excluded roosters. We don't want anybody waking up their neighbors at four thirty. Female chickens only.
What's your thoughts on chickens, Pete?
Yeah, you know, I I grew up with chickens, so, I mean, we had, we we had our own chicken coop and all that such, too. Yeah, I do kind of agree with the roosters thing, just, you know, you know, but we got to have some type of regulations, because we don't want it, I mean, they don't have to be, I mean, we might have to limit the numbers or something like that, because I don't know if you've ever been around a chicken coop in July, but it gets a little pertinent, shall we say.
In the in the sample ordinance that Tim drafted, it does include, you know, the chickens can't be running loose, the coop has to be maintained in a way that does not, you know, is not unsightly, it does not cause any noxious odors that would bother the neighbors, that kind of thing. So we.
You know, that that would that would be, you know, I just don't want somebody coming over thinking they could put in a chicken farm over there and sell it to Tyson Foods. But other than that, you know, I don't I don't have any issues with some yard birds.
Some healthy shoes that go along with having chickens. Big heavy ladies, and have you researched any of that? The diseases that come with chickens?
Oh, yeah, there were, there are some places where they have requirements within the ordinance that they have to be checked with a veterinarian regularly, like that that's part of the requirement of having chickens. So, I mean, I think that's something that we could look at including, potentially, if we have any kind of local facility or veterinarian office that could perform those checks.
We're going to get into who's going to regulate this. I mean, you know.
Under code enforcement, is that right, Tim?
That's that's who would have to do it, yes.
All right, well, we had a teach, well, actually, she was a vice principal at Big Ridge Elementary School about six years ago. She kept backyard chicken. And she developed a disease that was called, it was caused by breeding the spores of the fungus found in the bird droppings. And she developed a severe infectious disease that killed us. And there's other diseases out there that pertaining to to chickens. So I'm okay with chickens, don't get me wrong. But I think that by the time you put a house on a lot, your driveway, your decks and all that stuff, I think it really needs to be limited to at least one acre. I'm I'm, I just don't think that we need to put them in neighborhoods and subdivisions, and I just think it's too close. I'm okay with it. Maybe maybe an acre.
That would still be pretty exclusionary, because the average Red Bank lot is much less than an acre. Even if you added up all the lots in Red Bank that are over an acre, you wouldn't get up to a big percentage of Red Bank residents. A lot of other cities, go ahead.
Maybe drop it to three quarters of an acre. It's just, if if you've got a quarter of an acre, like, building houses on nail, it's just too close. You've got, you know, you've got small children, you know, it's just, you just got to think, think out, think, think of other people beside yourself, you know. You got to think about the big picture. You don't think about, like, five or ten people in Red Bank that want chickens. You got to think about the whole population. So that's that's my thing. I've always done that. You stop and look at the big picture of the damage it's going to do, or the potential damage, or the potential harm it can do to someone. So.
And we should also consider the potential good it could do. You know, America is a place of independence and self-reliance, and a lot of people are wanting to take some matters into their own hands and be more sustainable and provide for their own families. And they have the land and the capability to do so, but we would have to permit them to do so. And I absolutely agree that you have to be considerate of your neighbors and think about other people. That is one of the the items that Tim had included in the sample ordinance, was a distance requirement from the house or from any other property line that the chickens must meet. And also, we had discussed the possibility of requiring signatures from the adjacent neighbors.
Well, now, that I I I get behind, but you know, we also go have to limit the number of birds that are out there, too.
There's a limit on that as well.
Okay, all right.
I think there's also even a, there's like a limit on the number of chickens, and then it's also something about, like, it it has to be, what was it, Tim, for eggs only and no no breeding of chickens?
Yeah, it can't be for commercial purposes.
Yeah, not for commercial purposes, for personal use.
The the current draft is limited it to four chickens.
Okay.
I proposed, after speaking with Hannah Rogers, who was the city manager of Signal Mountain at the time that they implemented their backyard chicken ordinance, she said they started with four and ended up having to raise it to eight, merely because chickens have such a high attrition rate to predators and things like that, you know, neighborhood dogs, anything, that if somebody started off with only four chickens, they're liable to end up with one or none by the time the chickens mature to laying age. The way I saw some other ordinances handle it is that your chicken, oh, yeah, they're hard to sex also when they're young. So if you get four chicks, and two of them end up being roosters, and you have to get rid of them because of the ordinance, then you you're down to two layers. So some ordinance, as I saw, didn't count the number of chickens until they reached a year of age, I believe. So it'll let, basically allowed people to get more chicks, and then if they lost a few, or a few ended up being male, they would still end up with a usable number of layers when they got to maturity.
Tim, I would like to see in the ordinance that residents have to register with City Hall to have.
Yes, we have that. We have an application that we came up with, so we know where they are.
Yeah, so thirty-five dollar permit, and they have to get their their coop inspected before they can get birds?
That's correct.
If, yeah, another option would be something like to limit it to one or two chickens per quarter acre or something like that. So it would be based on the amount of land you have.
Oh, that's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
I hadn't thought about that, yeah. Smaller, bigger the lot, the more chickens, the smaller the lot, the less chickens. Makes sense.
But we ain't going to get into billy goats and all that other stuff.
Well, we already have an ordinance that allows livestock on more than two acres, goats and things like that. That's already in action, and I haven't heard any complaints. So it it would apply only to fowl and not to other barnyard animals of any kind. I did find a, one of the Tullahoma actually allows more than just chickens. They out allow chickens, ducks, geese, and other domestic fowl and exotic game birds. They basically expand it to be, you know, any fowl that are not disruptive, but the same, like, number limitations, coop inspections, everything else applies, regardless of whether you have chickens or ducks, for example.
Leave the ducks to the duck pond.
Quite a few people, I think, have water access nearby. Ducks are also the best predators of slugs for your garden.
Oh.
Okay. All right, any other discussion before we move on? This is the last named item on our agenda, formation of volunteer-type committees.
So I asked Tim to put that on there. I mentioned it at the last meeting, that I'd like to see some more like committees or boards that involve citizens in our community. And I looked up and found several, I'll read through them real quick, just to kind of give you an idea from examples of what those might look like, but like, an arts advisory board, community and civic engagement committee, economic development advisory committee, a small business committee, which I actually did have a small business owner here in Red Bank actually talk to me about that. Denise Ottinger, who owns America's Garden, talked to me and said that she thought it would be really nice if we had some kind of committee where small business owners could help, you know, give input and advice toward, like, other business and economic development in our community. And I thought that was really a good idea. A town events committee, a capital improvements program advisory committee, a trees and trails advisory committee, a farmers market board, which would be really cool if we could get, if we could have that set up at the middle school property, once that's decided on. A parks and recreation commission, a youth advisory board, which I thought was really nice, and a senior advisory board, just to get input from all the different citizens that live here in Red Bank. And I feel like we, it's very, it's very, the way that we're structured right now is very top-down. And I would like to have more direct involvement from our community and have them feel like they, you know, because they are stakeholders in our community. And I feel like they would have more pride in our community if they felt like their their voices and opinions had a direct impact on things that happen in the city. So I I I just wanted to talk about that and bring that up. I don't know, you know, what committees we might need or want if we want to have citizens reach out and say, hey, I think this kind of committee would be great, and I'd love to volunteer, you know, put that out there. Okay. Thank you, Tim. And maybe, yeah, get citizen input on that, or we can, you know, each of us can email Tim with ideas that we have, and then have another discussion about this later. But I just wanted to kind of bring it up and have people be thinking about it.
Some point several years ago, we had a business board that was formed by the businesses here in Red Bank. Do you remember what that was called, Arnie?
Do not.
I know Barbara Brogdon was involved in that. Several other businesses that that were, so, but that was, they developed that board, and they did it all on their own. And they met regularly. I don't know what happened to it. I think it just fizzled out.
How did that work? Did they bring recommendations to the board?
Um.
Or policy, or?
They just met, and occasionally they would bring things to the board, the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the way that I thought, I looked at a a few other municipalities in Tennessee to see, you know, how they had this structured. And, I mean, their formal boards where they're in committees, where they're appointed, and they have, you know, scheduled meetings every month, and then, you know, share that information with the board of commissioners or aldermen or whatever it was. And so I I really, I I would, I would really like it to be more concrete, not like, oh, well, if you ever have an idea, maybe send it to us. Like, to have something more structured so that we are listening to those people and those committees and boards regularly.
Well, they were pretty structured. Pete and I have talked about a business development board.
Yeah, well, and 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 if I may bring in some things from from my experience on the boards that I served on, like in NAPS and things like that, that we really started gaining traction, especially with the sunshine laws, okay? But we started gaining traction when we started making, we didn't really have committees. We had what they called a team. And so here would be the team that we're going to look at, say, it's a parks and recreations, and they get together, and they meet every week, and then they report back to the board. And but they're doing all of the work, you know, and because otherwise, all of the the board members just get inundated, because they're on thirteen teams, you know. But when you, when you do, you know, many hands make light work. Okay, so if if you can, now, and and I would say this, the the fizzle out part, unless you got a strong leader in each one of the committees, then it's going to be a struggle. But you if you got good leaders and you've got good passion, then, you know, I would say that would be something that, you know, if you wanted, like, the citizens' ideas for the the middle school property team, then they get together, and then they would do the door knocking. They do the the stuff that comes in with their with their ideas. They're the ones that are packing out the the boards. So there's a lot of responsibility on the team leaders. But I I I've seen it in the past. It works.
That's what we did, Pete, back years ago, on Focus on the Future, when Red Bank was really at its lowest. We did, actually, that's where I met Tim. And we we had different committees, team leaders. We, uh, we had different committees, uh, team leaders, uh, and that's how we worked and, and we accomplished quite a bit. So I, I like that.
Awesome.
I've heard a lot of good things also about, um, was it Friends of Red Bank or?
We had the Red Bank Pride, Friends of Red Bank.
It was Red Bank Neighborhood Pride, I think.
Yeah, uh, but don't also forget, we have our Chamber of Commerce. We have our, uh, I, I mean, some of these things are, some of these things have a lot of infrastructure already there. We just got to tap into. Um, uh, and, um, uh, the, the, the Parks thing on the Facebook page, the Parks and Recs thing.
The Friends of Red Bank Pride, yeah.
Yeah, Friends of Red Bank Park. These are, then if somebody wants to come up there and spearhead some of this stuff, I'm all for that.
Okay. I think the other important factor would be if we, if we manage to get these, um, volunteer boards rolling. Um, of course, we'll need to, you know, act on their recommendations because nothing takes the, the wind out of your sails, uh, in terms of motivation and, and how much investment you're willing to put into something like this as a volunteer. Then if you, you go and you knock on all those doors and you get all that feedback and then you bring it to the board and then nothing comes of it. So, um, yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I'd love to see what kind of.
Well, and that's why it takes periodic things. It, it don't come in all at once. So it, it's kind of like, eh, you gotta tweak it as you go down the road, you know? It's, it's like more like a shepherd. He kinda eat it all.
Yeah, um, I'd love to see what kind of expertise we have access to in, here in Red Bank and what kind of topics people would be interested in, in, um, heading boards about volunteering for.
I'm wondering how we can put out some kind of announcement about that? I mean.
Well, we have a, uh, any other business, we have a, a Facebook page, um, in, in the works. Um, so once that's up and running, we could possibly make an announcement there.
Awesome.
Yeah, hopefully we might be able to put it on the website somewhere. Um, would you go, I could mention it in my mayor's, uh, report at the meeting in a few minutes.
You can, and w- once we get our board application that people can apply for different boards, we'll have it up on the website. It's on another future agenda to talk about, so.
I guess we could, we could put a form on the, uh, on the website that's very similar to the application for say, um, I'm interested in forming a committee. Here's what the committee would be about.
I, I can send it. I found a good one from another, um, municipality in Tennessee that I can send just to have as an example.
Is it like open ended like that?
Uh, it's, it's basically they ask about like your expertise and knowledge and why you're interested in, you know, applying for this board or committee or whatever.
Okay.
So it's pretty, it is open.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, any more discussion on volunteer committees? All right, um, any other business that's not on the agenda?
I have, sorry, Ruth, go ahead.
Okay, I have something. I've had several citizens approach me about this. And it's, uh, we lost Tom Weathers, Coach Tom Weathers. He was with Red Bank High School for 29 years. He took our team, uh, he was, all of his games were successful. He had a 72% winning rate and, uh, he was, he coached our guys. And they won the 2000 class 5A football championship in Tennessee. Earl Riggs played under him. Uh, he was just an amazing mentor for our kids. We have had several people ask that we could do something in his honor. And, uh, it's, uh, several people have talked to me about ma- naming December 2nd, Tom Weathers Day, which that December 2nd is, uh, the night that they won the football championship.
Oh, okay. And we, now, I'm sure he's the Tom Weathers of Tom Weathers Drive, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
He very well thought of and, and loved and, and respected in, in Red Bank and, and all over the county and the state. And we were very fortunate to have, uh, that caliber of, of coach and teacher for our children. So I would like to, um, I would like to get permission to, uh, Arnie and Tim draft that ordinance. Whatever resolution I guess it would be, uh, to do that in honor of, of Coach Weathers. If I have any objections to that?
No objection.
Hello.
Oh.
It was awesome. Take care of that for me.
We will.
All right. Well, we have, uh, about 15.
I had, I had some things, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Sorry to miss you, Dalton. Dalton, go ahead.
Um, I was, I was just going to ask first follow up on a couple, a couple of things. Uh, Tim, on the government website, design company demos, have you been able to get any more information on getting them scheduled?
Um, I, I do have a meeting scheduled with, uh, Revise, which is, uh, the same company that did College Dale's website. I've been looking at a couple of different ones. I personally, I know it's not, it'd be y'all's decision, but I like the way it's laid out and how you can go to it, click on in the dropdown boxes where you can find stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't actually physically done a demo yet, but
Okay.
I, I do have here on my desk to do some.
Okay.
You know, depending on cost, it may be that, that's something we have to look at during budget season and budget for it. But I haven't got there on the cost amount yet.
Okay, thank you for updating on that. Um, I, I did want to ask, uh, if you could update us on the RP that, uh, the deadline was today for the Red Bank Middle School property, how many proposals you received?
Uh, I've got one, two, three, four in.
Four proposals, okay.
And, um, I will open those up and be sure that they submitted what they were supposed to submit. And then, um, um, I'll get it to you guys and we'll go through them and look at them. And the ones that we like, we can call those people back in for further discussion on those.
So that will be the process? We'll review them before the planning commission or?
Yes, 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 we can. And then we can send it to them. So it's kind of a combined.
Well, these proposals can also be available to the public on our website.
These? Well, we'll have, we'll have public involvement meetings, uh, once, once we choose or, or look at them and decide which one we're going to go with, then of course we'll involve them publicly. But as far as putting each one on the website, I don't know that I can, can actually do that. There's, there's a whole lot of information in them, uh, that maybe the general public don't need to see.
Don't understand.
And I, I, I don't mean that in a bad way, like we're trying to hide anything, but there's just some financial type stuff that we're required in those reports.
Sure, and I'm sure there's proprietary information in some of those proposals. Um, I wonder if at the very least we could offer the overhead map view.
Sure.
There's not really proprietary on that, um, and make those available to the public.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
And feedback.
Okay.
There wouldn't be any need in that, Tim, until we looked at those and, and sort of called them out if there's.
Well, I agree, yeah. I mean, there'll, there'll come a time we can put them up on there.
But to begin with, we need to look at them and see if there's anything even that we're interested in. If they're not interested in it, there's no sense in wasting anybody's time.
Well, except for the fact that we're not the only ones who are, um, being, uh, who should have input on these, uh, designs. And I feel like I would like for citizens to be able to review these so that they can send us our comments while we're reviewing them because maybe they'll see something I won't see. Um, or have, you know, additional, uh, concerns that maybe I'm not thinking about. Uh, and just again, I'm very, I'm very big on like citizen input and valuing, um, other people's opinions and perspectives on those things.
Even if we end up hating all the proposals, uh, it wouldn't hurt to at lea- at the, like I said, at the very least, let the overhead views be available. Because even if all the citizens don't like them either, they can, they can start a discussion about what it is, like what they'd like to see instead. And we can, we can get a discussion started earlier rather than later, even if we have to go back to the drawing board.
Good.
Great.
And I, one more thing, because this keeps coming up, um, uh, that I keep having, uh, concerns about this. And I'm sure it's been brought up before, but I don't know what efforts or possible, um, solutions there would be. But the, the dog park is a constant mud pit. Um, because those, the spouts, the faucets where the water comes out, they leak constantly. Um, and it doesn't matter if it's a super sunny day, they're always muddy and it's very messy. Um, and so I've had lots of people commenting on that and, you know, asking how that can be fixed. Uh, Tim, has that ever been looked at or?
Yes, um, public works should be placing mulch out on there just as soon as they can get in there. Um, we're going to move that, that particular faucet that's given the issue, we're going to move it to the outside because it's always a problem from it being all the dogs around there and the whole deal. So
Yeah.
Uh, I feel like that the solution to that is move it right outside. If your dog needs a drink, you can take him out and get him a drink outside on the concrete pad instead of that being inside the area where the dogs run. Um, as far as drainage issues, the biggest problem with that park is, which I might not understand, it has a liner under it. So if, if we get a lot of rain, the liner actually holds the water in the upper column of the soil, which it stays wet.
Turns into a pond.
So, um, we've always had the problem of the dog park being muddy. Uh, mainly because of that reason. And, uh, we have put mulch out before in this and that. Um, you know, you wish people would say, hey, I don't want to take my dog today because we've had two inches of rain, but that never happens. They go anyway. So, um, but we are going to address the current situation with moles to try to help with that. And then we have it on our, um, work list to move that faucet out.
Okay, the, the liner, is that because it's built on a landfill? Is that why?
That is correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
There's not really any.
And so that's to another question, that, that limits what kind of trees we can plant, what we can actually do if you're digging in the earth, so.
Right.
How far down is that liner? Like how deep?
Uh, it varies in different locations.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but the lower you go like the dog park, the closer it gets, you know? Then maybe it's deeper up at the upper ends, like where the restrooms and stuff are.
Okay.
All right, any other business before we adjourn?
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, one of my, uh, that I've had some concern from the thing was the invocation and that if it, and, uh, I know that we went to a moment of silence on the last one, but I've had, uh, several citizens give me a call about that. Now, here's, here's my thinking on this and we can go however you want to. But if you're, I, I kind of like the, the one where Arnie put in here that if you're a church here and you're a clergy person and, uh, and you want to, uh, lead our invocation, I have no trouble with that. If there is not, I don't think that any member of the board or the, um, the, uh, city should be directing that. But that's my opinion on that, so.
Well, we have that on the agenda.
But I mean, and, and it's one of those things, I don't know if this is a hill worth dying on. Uh, you know, I mean, I, I think that, uh, I mean, I don't want, uh, the, the, being in the chat and doing, uh, you know, uh, it, it, it had taken away from what we're really doing, you know, if, 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 if I may say so. And, uh, and, and I was a little upset that it, that it wasn't even spoken to. So I, I, I don't think this should be something that is a unilateral decision being made. I think if we want to have a moment of silence, we need to talk it over through the board and, and go from there.
Sure, and it's on the agenda for the 19th, uh, on the work agenda, so we will be discussing it in further detail at that time. Yep.
What about tonight, Holly? How are you going?
Uh, tonight will remain a, a moment of silence until we're able to open up that discussion at the next meeting.
Can I ask you a question? Why did you not discuss this important issue with the rest of the board before you put that upon yourself to do that? Is there a specific reason you did that?
The mayor is the chair of the meeting and I had to follow my conscience and do what I thought was best as I led the meeting. All right. Any other items, uh, any other business before we adjourn? We only have about five minutes to break before our formal meeting. Good, all right. Well, in that case, I will see you guys back here at six.